Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting to order. It is 7:02 PM. If the clerk will call the roll, please. Von Crooks? Yeah, I clicked that.
Is there anybody up in the corner that's making your screen big?
Oh, I see what you mean. This one here. Participants.
There we go.
Okay.
Just a mid-album.
Bear with me on the Zoom, everybody. Von Crooks?
Here.
And Timmer, can you please state what city and state you are in and why you are not able to be present?
Yes, I'm in Trenton, Michigan. For medical reasons, I'm not there.
Benedetti, thank you.
Here.
Cabo Watten?
Present.
Pete?
Here.
Peruggi?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Brazepa? More, uh, Quorum, present, Mayor Protem, thank you. And next, I would like to invite the public to speak to the Mayor Protem. Mayor is on the phone. Councils regarding the agenda items. You'll have, is it five minutes? And it must pertain to items on the agenda. Is there anyone seeking to add public comment?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse the mayor.
Let's support that.
There's a motion and support for excusing the mayor. Clerk, call the roll, please. Or we don't need to. We'll just do unanimously. Okay, unanimously so ordered. And again, public is invited to speak regarding agenda items, and I don't see any hands raised on the Zoom. There is nobody in the audience, so we will go ahead and proceed to our first agenda item, which is the Parks and Recreation Director, Tim Beaker, to give us a presentation on the Kennedy Pool.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Pete, and council. As we've spoke before, the Kennedy Aquarium, or the Kennedy Aquatic Center is in need of some repairs over the next couple of years. We were lucky enough to receive the Spark Grant in the past few weeks from the State of Michigan and the DNR. After applying for that in a very thorough process, we were awarded that. So we have some options to proceed with the pool and how we can do so over the next, I'd say, couple months in order to open the pool this summer and then also go forth presenting how we can make everything work from there. Option one is a pool deck restoration, that pool deck and restoration proposal work would be done in spring of 2023. Money would be used from potential financing options, and then Spark Grant funding would be used for the second project over the fall and winter of 2324. The total of the project this spring would be about $584,103. And it would include cement deck replacement of about 17,000 square feet, full gutter welding, which was something that was identified in previous sessions that is necessary to mitigate some of the leaks in the pool, replace the gutter grading on top of the, on top, new handrails to enter and exit the pool, two new dive stands with anchors and diving boards, eight new starting platforms with anchors, an additional $70,000 to finish the current work being done, which is after we did find some cracks, about 120 feet of cracks in the shell of the pool that actually go through the shell. Those are, those were done in, back, over the winter when we were doing exploratory work, we came across these cracks as well as removing a couple flags of cement to check the gut, check the gutters out, see how they were pinned in, and then also see how much leakage we were getting from that area. At that point, we'd also replace hydrostatic valves in the bottom of the pool. Those are just about at their life. Typically, they would last about six to seven, eight years, six to eight years. I believe they are on gear six currently. We believe that that may be another source of leak that is coming from. We'll see a bit more of that once we can drain the pool completely and get down there and do that. We do also know that lighting is another source of a leak of water in the pool area. The lights themselves, you can actually see now, are filled with water still. Water is going through the conduits behind the lights and seeping behind the pool shell itself. And we know that those conduits, the lights have to be repaired, replaced, and solidified in there. The second portion, which would be the grant that we have received from Spark Grant and $1 million, the grant monies would be specified to use in these areas, requiring engineered specifications, a bid process, and a bid process. This would include the following: bid package specifications. This would be done by our city engineer. Locker room creation and repairs, and when I say creation, creating a family locker room, more accessible areas for persons with handicap or disabilities to be able to maneuver in and get around. Filter replacement, an ADA pool lift, and modifying the facility entrance, again, for more ease of access and egress. That is option one. Option two. Did you have any, I'm sorry. Option two is minimal deck repair now. Spark Grant funding plus additional funds would be used, would need to be used in the fall of winter of 2324. Minimal repairs at this point in time would cost approximately $80,000. Again, we would replace the, or repair the crack that is in the bottom of the pool, replace the hydrostatic valves, do the work on the lighting. We would also repair plaster at the bottom of the pool and repair exploratory cement that we had removed earlier in the year. Earlier, or later in 2022, I'm sorry. Project uses for Spark Grant funding and additional funds, approximately 1.8 million, would be the cement deck replacement of 17,000 square feet, full gutter welding, replace gutter grading, new handrails, dive stands with anchors, starting platforms and anchors, again, going back out for a bid package specification for all of this, locker room creation repairs, filter replacement, ADA pool lift, and facility entrance modifications. The reason these are split up in the ways that they are, there's two different things that come into play. The Spark Grant is a, again, a wonderful opportunity for us as a city, but it does require a lot of specifications to be made, a lot of things to be put in place so that we can make sure we meet all of the requirements of the DNR. The DNR are still working to finalize those specifications of what is going to be required in that. And they anticipate that the, I did receive an email late yesterday, they anticipate the booklet will probably be out sometime in the next couple of weeks, is the way it sounded. However, that will put us in a, by the time we get through the booklet, understand it, get it over to our city engineer, and we go and have them prepare the bid specifications, unfortunately, we would not be able to get any work done prior to the pool opening this year. And at that point, then it kind of puts us behind, knowing that we're piecing things together just to get moving for the new year. So that's why, in my recommendation, I would greatly prefer to go with option one. But I also know it is a, it's a large financial commitment upfront, and that's why I wanted to bring it forth to you all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beaker. We'd like to have some discussions. So we'll start with
Mayor?
Councilperson Benedetti, and then we'll move to councilperson Von Crooks on Zoom.
So, Tim, I'll go, I'll start with option one. So you're telling us that the first part of option one could be done in time to open the meeting. There'll be no delay?
Yes, I spoke with the, I spoke with the company, the pool company that we have been working for, or working with over the past couple of years to try and mitigate the problems that we have. And they had said they still have a slot that they can fit us into and get everything completed before opening.
And when you go, so you go down your list here of things, the dive stands, the anchors and boards, the starting platforms, all those things. Those are all for swim club, right?
Not necessarily. Those are things that we utilize in the pool for swim club, for swim lessons, for, even the diving boards are utilized for different things. So, they're, the reason that those are actually included in this is because we are doing the cement replacement. If we were not replacing the cement,
Okay.
we would not have to put those in at this time.
Okay, cool. No, and thanks for letting us know that, because then we can tell people it's because we are fixing all this stuff.
Because the anchors have to be placed in, they're brand new anchors that have to be put into the, we would hate to try and do it twice, so to speak.
No, you're good. That's all I have.
Okay, councilperson Von Crooks?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, I think option one is a great way to go. I think the pool has always been definitely a jewel of this community. People so enjoy that pool and the surrounding area, and I, I really want to see us open that pool, you know, for the spring, and I think we have to go ahead, and we have such a financial investment there already that it's ridiculous not to go forward and get this pertinent done right now. So we can open the pool and make some money, um, you know, creating revenue, so we can go forward with more for that recreation center. So I just, I'm all for option one, and, you know, we'll figure out the financing, you know, if we have to go for a five-year bond or whatever, you know, financing. We should definitely do option one, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilperson Peruggi?
Yes, um, this is kind of a broad statement or question. My concern is that we haven't gotten through budget yet, and we have contracts yet, so would it potentially be in our best interest to do option two based on that information, or Dean?
So, the budget is, and the mayor's budget is 90, 99% prepared. I think we're where we need to be. We do have contracts coming up and other expenses. If, if you, if the council is so inclined to go with option one, my request would be that you allow Ms. Saul to secure financing for that. The rough numbers would be over five years. It would be about a $130,000 payment. Now, if you recall, last budget, not the current one, but the last budget, we did have $120-ish thousand a year that was committed to paying off the previous renovation to the pool. So it's, the rest of the pool on the balance sheet actually, expense versus revenue is even with the exception of the, the capital investment that's needed here. So if you, if you're so inclined to go with option one, the only caveat to that would be I would, I would not just want to go to fund balance. We do have some other things we're going to be financing. Garbage truck. Garbage truck and special pickup truck, and we could do that all, which you guys have already previously approved. We can do that all at one time and just charge it to the Aquatic Center. So that would be my, my request to keep things budgetarily so we're not draining our, our fund balance. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I mean, it is a concern to fund balance, and with, you know, we don't know what the budget is, and we have the contracts. I'm just making sure that we're not overlooking anything, because everything's tight, and we all know that.
Right, and, and I will say this, the conversations I've had with Mr. Beaker, and the mayor's been included in Karen, you know, that's why luckily we were able to get back to you guys, I think it was about two months ago or whatever, and we, we knew total investment, it was going to be in the, in the $2 million range. total investment, it was going to be in the, in the 2 million range. But I think this plan is manageable and affordable because of the million-dollar grant, so I mean, if you, if you defer and you want to go with option two, it really, from a budgetary standpoint, isn't going, if your backup option is option two, it's not going to make a difference budgetarily wise, because you're going to have one increased cost that you push off another year, right? And I'm guaranteed they're not going to run a sale on it. And, and you're still going to be in the position where instead of $584,000, you're going to have to find a way to finance 800, and you'll just be a year farther in another 20 or 30,000 into payment unless you wanted to go into fund balance, which I don't recommend. Does that make sense?
And I guess the next question. I was hired to predict the future as it relates to costs, but are, is there anything in here that you would be concerned with that we're not, you know, we might be liable for, like, an additional cost, whether it could be, I don't know, maybe this company, the companies are short employees, they can't do the pool. I mean, is there anything we need to really look out for?
I think any, any agreement that we would put forth, we hope, we're doing our homework, I will say that much. The, we're still in, I mean, some of the monies that we're looking at that would be due over the next winter, again, are going to be estimates. It's, it's really dependent upon how our, the economy goes and what the pricing are going to be for the goods. And that's where we, I can't answer that. I did put in some additional monies of these estimates just based on that thought process, but that's where we're at right now.
All right, Tim. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you. I also see that the mayor, Rezepa, is on the call, so we are going to go ahead and ask him to unmute and see if he can go ahead and respond some comments.
Hey, everyone. So first off, I do want to very deeply apologize for not being there right now. I am on my way. I unfortunately had some work obligations out of town that ran later unforeseen, so should, depending on how late this goes, may see you all in a few minutes here. But did want to call in to, just to kind of lay out my two cents here, is after, you know, talking with him about this a handful of times and looking at some of these options with Karen and Dean, I am, well, if I am able to get their time to formally vote, but regardless, would be very supportive of option one. I think that, as I caught at the end of Tim's remarks there, too, but, you know, really, when we look at it here, we've got a million dollars, and I, I mean, I don't want to say free money, but money we did not expect to be getting. And that is something that certainly, you know, want to make sure is utilized to its fullest extent. And outside of that, I think that, you know, the two, the critical things here for me are doing it right one time and making sure that we can get the pool open as soon as possible once we do it. And Tim, as I believe he mentioned it today as well, but indicated that, you know, this should still put us on path to at least be very close on when we normally open. And I think that we would behoove ourselves to, you know, not use this grant wisely here, and I think I caught the end there that I believe Councilman Perugi had asked the question, and Dean elaborated a little bit, too, but of discussing the financing options for it. I don't think that we're in a spot where we want to just dip into fund balance for this arbitrarily and pay for the whole thing as much as, you know, that would make it easier. But really, if we're able to look at it, too, as Councilwoman Von Crooks mentioned there, too, as, you know, if we're able to bond this out for a very short period of time, and the fact that our operational deficit has shrunk so much over these last couple of years, I guess, you know, silver lining of some of the changes we had to make from COVID. But it really kind of comes out to being the same spot we have been in with that bond payment, you know, likely to hover in that same range. While as much as I was looking forward to having that coming off the books and being able to spend that money on something else, we've still got to maintain our stuff, more or less, here. I very, very much appreciate the budgetary concerns. That seriously is, right, it's very good, obviously, to have that at the forefront of mind, too, without knowing, you know, you all, the, the big picture here, but as Dean mentioned, we're, you know, 99% of the way through, just dotting i's, crossing t's, and not to play the full hand or anything, but I was very encouraged about where we're at on the budget, and if I'm being completely honest, it's been the easiest one that I have done as mayor so far. So hopefully, we'll have more good news for you over the coming weeks, but just wanted to make sure that I got in my comments in support of that first option there, and knock on wood, hopefully, I'll see you all in a couple of minutes.
Thanks, Mayor Rezepa, and we also have a question from councilperson Cabawatin.
Yeah, and, Tim, maybe this is more of a question for Karen. What is our annual revenue that we generate off the pool as far as public traffic?
It can vary. Last year, it was about $169,000. Prior to that, 21, it was almost $200,000, and then we had a couple of COVID-related.
We can't hear her.
She's going to head to the mic.
Thank you, Timber.
Oh, okay. Funny, Tim. Oh, sorry. Hi. He said it's in larger print on his printer. So in 2022, it was $169,000. 2021, $193,000 in revenue. 2020 was the COVID year, so that was only 95. 2019 was $118,000. 2018 was $121,000. They did restructure the way they do the signups and revenue in the last couple of years, so that's why you see that increase.
Okay, all right. Just, just kind of curious. And Karen, since you're up there, I mean, is there any big debt or anything that's dropping? I know you haven't submitted budget yet, or we haven't presented budget yet, but is there any big debt that's dropping off that could kind of?
One of the sewer loans comes off this year.
How much is that?
Ah, I don't know.
You know, okay. I think I'm all set at this point. Thank you.
Councilperson Perugi.
Yeah, Tim, with all the renovations and all the things that are happening, to Timber's point of trying to generate more money, is there anything in here that you could utilize as a marketing piece that, hey, we got this pool, it does X, Y, or Z?
So right now, we do, as I, as I walked in today, I actually received an email about a potential school coming in early June to the pool and bringing larger groups in. As we do create some of these changes, family locker rooms, things of that nature, more accessible areas, makes it a lot easier for school groups, day camp groups, any, any area camps, so to speak, for the summer to come in. We do do a decent amount of business with them currently, but I think that increases our opportunities to, to do that. Also allows us to do more birthday parties and larger groups, things of that nature, so.
So to my question, though, are we going to market it differently?
Most definitely. Well, we'll, we'll market, we can market those aspects that are new and, and hopefully quite creative as we move forward, and that's, I think, what'll start bringing more and more people into our pool.
All right. Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Councilperson Rodriguez.
You know, I, I feel bad you went back and sat down, Karen. I tried to get Mayor Protem, you know, so so I do have a couple of questions for you. I know we have a big debt that's dropping off. You said earlier that we would be able to finance the, the garbage truck and the special pickup truck.
You guys have approved that, yes.
Right, so we would be able to finance if we went with option one and rolled all those in together, correct?
That's what I'm hoping.
Do we know what the interest rates are?
You know what, when, last time I checked, it was in February, when I came before this, for one of the trucks, it was 4.37. But let me check. Yes, 4.37. That was in February. So I will have to inquire again, and usually I look to three banks at least to see what the rates are available at the time.
You know what the overall cost would be if we were to go with option one and we were to finance all three of those together?
I don't have it for all three, but just for the pool, it would be $78,000 over five years for the interest. $78,000 for the interest over five years? Sorry about that. I think they do that on purpose. Just kidding.
And that's all I really have. Thank you so much. Tim, I know that I had a question in regards to the, the cement being poured, and you guaranteed me that everything would be good. We wouldn't have to worry about that too much, and it would end up just being a delay in opening, correct, for option one?
I'm truly hoping that we're not having much of a delay in opening at all. I spoke with, like I said, I spoke with the contractor today. They believe that the, the cement should be able to be poured in May and allowing us to open in June, so that's kind of the track we're on. We don't, we've never, I don't want to say never. We have not opened in at least 15 years on Memorial Day weekend. We always prolong it a couple of weeks due to school getting out. Once the schools are out, then we're able to have more staff on hand, lifeguards and such, so that, that puts us in a preferred timeline.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? And we'd be looking for a motion on either option one or two, if someone would like to make a motion.
Make a motion and go with option one. Support.
Can you include the financing of the expenses, too, please, in your motion?
Okay, I'm going to amend my motion for option one, including the financing to be handled through the controller.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, that is unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beaker. Thanks, everybody, and we will go ahead and move on to our second item today, which is for the city administrator to address.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Before you have a memo of understanding draft between the city of Trenton and the Wayne County Land Bank, and quite simply, so last meeting you approved, I think it was last meeting you approved, going out to specification and bid to tear down the old water treatment plant that's up off of King Road and hasn't been used in many, many years. In, in the interim, Wayne County Land Bank has offered to help fund that project, part of their blight removal to the tune of $68,850. But we have to, like, we have to have this signed and returned back to them this week. So I was luckily able to add it to your agenda, and this is a good thing. I will say that, as you guys know, dealing with Wayne County and Land Bank and all the other fund things, occasionally these things come apart or whatever, and, and it doesn't pan out, but the initial feedback from the county was they thought they could throw in 20,000, and then they turn around and are offering up more money, so I think it's a really good thing for us, and the motion I'm looking for would be moved to approve the attached MOU with Wayne County Land Bank and authorize a city attorney to make non-consequential changes to the agreement as needed, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on the city's behalf.
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Councilperson Cabawatin.
Dean, just a quick question. Has the attorney approved the agreement and looked at it and approved it?
Yes, there were, yes, there were a couple of minor changes, whatever, and non-consequential, but yes, it's been, been approved.
As long as they've looked at it.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered, and to our clerk, do we have any late communications today?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. This is also time for public comment, so I would ask if anyone is in the audience or on Zoom, if you'd like to address mayor and council, please do that through me. You have about five minutes for your comments. And we have one from Mayor Rezepa. Go ahead, Mayor Rezepa.
Not to be funny, but no, thank you. I just would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much. Councilwoman paid for running this in my absence. I really appreciate it, and it certainly was not my intent or desire, and hopefully it won't be happening again, but I appreciate it very much.
No problem. Thank you. Just drive safe.
I'm almost done. Thank you, though.
All right, I do not see any other comments coming in, so I'd like to request a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. And we unanimously support that, so that is so ordered, and we'd like to adjourn.